Everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. The, for the record, this is the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Vigo County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. Mr. Roderick, will you call the role, please?
Ms. Conley. Mr. Witt. Mr. Marvel.
President.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Here.
And Dave Patterson.
Here.
Before we get started with the, the agenda on the meeting, of the meeting, I'd like to call on the mayor for a quick presentation he has.
Thank you, Mr. President. We wanted to take a moment to thank a couple of folks that really helped us get this underway as we started a few years ago to develop the whole CIB movement here, to do the convention center. And it was, it took a collaboration of the city and the county and Convention Tourism Bureau to kind of work through some bumps in the road that we had at the beginning, but we created this entity. And now, as, you know, as every time I drive by the building, I just think what's happened over the last really seven years, counting this year, to get us to the point where we are today. And so, somebody's excited over there about this announcement. No. So, we'd asked Judy Anderson and Brad Anderson to come today because they were founding partners with this group and just wanted to give them a little token of our appreciation. So if you would come up here, each of you.[129.56][132.36](Laughter)
We're not married.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you guys for your help. You know, I'm challenging this, what's the best we can ask for? Gotta keep going, that's right. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Now you have to stick around for the rest of the meeting, though.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for, for reminding me to, to get this done. Now we're in item number four on our agenda. The, are there any additions or revisions to today's agenda? Hearing none. Has all of the board members received and reviewed a copy of the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved for it. Item number five on today's agenda is old business. Five point one is update on the construction progress with the Chief Operating Officer of Garmin Services, Brian Coystre. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, guys. Morning.
Morning.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to remind you of some day of progress of the last one. We'll start with the budget. So the current GMV amount, one change last month. It stands at forty-six million, three hundred ninety thousand feet over. Scheduled, project continues to move forward on schedule. Official substantial completion date is April twenty-seven, twenty-two. I will tell you that the schedule is branding a little earlier than that. It is our own, from Project Over. Sooner than that, but pulled off on April twenty-third. Summer. Challenges, I think, structure, trees, colors, colors. There are materials. Both being several. That's all right now. Station. Recent progress. There's been a lot. I will tell you that this process gives me a kind of a patient personal, always feel like things go faster. This gives me a chance every month to look back at what we have on this stuff. Everybody working on the project probably agrees that. Exterior framing and sheathing is complete of the building. It's kind of changed colors over the last few months. It was yellow and now it's a shade of blue, which is air moisture barrier. And now it's turning limestone or cement. Exterior masonry is complete on the northwest elevation. That means western south elevation, which is a more important place for a top elevation. When we go inside the building, most if not all of the interior walls are now stained. In-wall blocking, which I've got a picture I'll show you, that looks like you're expecting, that is being installed. Roof tiles, air handling units are installed. There's seven of those upon roof. We're crammed in this one set of plates. Skylights, there's four of those that are installed. Water main tap, tap at Wabash Avenue. I will do, I will go, and Wabash Avenue, those were three days, others. That's what I mean.
It wasn't. Should I start over or are we good? Okay. And last item for the convention center is the electrical gears installed. So the, the main panel that'll feed electric to the building, that gear is installed and crews are pulling wire to it now. Parking garage, major milestone. All the pre-casts are set and we are in the early stages of beginning to pour the concrete topping slab that the cars will park on. So upcoming activities for the convention center, ephes, which is a stucco-like material, is being installed right now on the west elevation, so between the convention center and the Hilton Garden Inn. It's going in now and will continue really for the next two months probably before it's all complete. Exterior masonry continues. Limestone, as I mentioned, you'll be seeing that take place along Wabash Avenue here in the coming weeks. MEP or mechanical, electrical and plumbing rough ends are moving forward. Friday, the monumental stair, which is, this is in the spine, they call it, the main corridor. This, kind of the feature stair that takes you up to the second floor, that will arrive on Friday and installation will begin. Elevator, we are, we've got the crew scheduled to start that on June seventh for the convention center. And storefront frames, this is really window frames, will begin installation along Wabash Avenue on June first. So, big push right now to get the building sealed up, get windows in, get the exterior envelope finalized. And that work will take place really over the next couple of months and we've got a goal of by August to have the building weather tight. For the parking garage, I mentioned the concrete floor slabs. That will begin May twenty-fourth. We've got a couple of months' worth of, of pouring those floors. And then the elevator installation for the parking garage will begin on June twenty-third. Some recent progress, this is from the webcam. Looking along Wabash Avenue. The window frames I mentioned will start to the left of the screen and work their way right. This is a shot from the roof, so you can see the four skylights as well as a couple of the air handling units. The picture on the right is an interior shot of the skylights from the, from the main corridor. This is some exterior masonry, so this picture is taken from behind the copper bar, looking towards Wabash Avenue. You can see the, the blockwork taking place. This shot is taken, imagine you're standing by the port of cashier of the Hilton Garden Inn, so behind the Hilton Garden Inn and you're looking towards Clabber Girl. This is the, the back corner of the building. The big opening there will be an overhead door. That's the receiving area of the convention center. And you can see two of the materials. To the left is the block and to the right is the ephes or stucco type material, which will clad the building. Couple interior shots, you can see, the photo on the left is showing some interior mechanical, electrical and plumbing work. You can see the duct work. It's installed, it's insulated, as well as some piping and sprinkler pipe to the right. Photo to the right is of the spine. It's looking south towards Wabash Avenue. Photo on the left is the ballroom. Wherever you see the pink insulation, that is the location where the operable partitions will be installed and crews are on site now installing that track. And once that track's installed, we'll bring drywall down and wrap it into those tracks. So that work is taking place now. The photo on the right is taken from the second floor, looking across the opening that looks down onto the first floor to the wall that separates the spine from the ballroom. Some drywall work taking place there. I mentioned in-wall blocking, so you can see the plywood strapping that's installed between the studs. And it's really throughout the building, but this, this allows us to fasten, so this is a restroom, so that blocking would be there for toilet paper holders, grab bars, handicap grab bars, toilet partitions, anything that mounts to the wall. We've got to put blocking in there so that we have something secure to fasten to. We also will do that for cabinetry and countertops. See some more of that. This would be in a, a large public restroom. That would, that blocking would be there for the toilet partitions to fasten to. Couple shots of the parking garage. Photo on the left is taken from Cherry Street. So this was kind of the last piece of the puzzle for the pre-cast erection. It is now complete. The photo on the right is taken from the ISU parking garage. So the building's really going to look like that for the next several months as we begin to focus work on pouring the interior concrete slabs. This is a shot of inside the garage. So this is the pre-cast structural members and then we pour a concrete topping slab on top of, of that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Do you have the board have any questions? Terry, Emily? Nothing?
I mean, we just called another.
Oh, no, we.
Getting some of the supplies in.
We're absolutely having problems. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. It is getting to be a challenge, but we're really focused on it. We're taking a proactive approach and it's not just this project. It's every one of our projects and every other project that's taking place. Here, I think we've got an advantage. We're far enough along that the majority of the materials have been secured. And if they haven't, we're, you know, well in line to receive them. But we're, we're very active, calling subcontractors and suppliers, double checking delivery dates, encouraging them to take delivery of the materials because we're allowed to bill for stored materials. So we're, we're trying to take advantage of that as much as we can. And really just rolling up our sleeves and making sure that everything we need is, is available. But I, I would tell you, if not every day, pretty close to that, you know, we get some surprise that what was once readily available now takes several weeks and, gotta yell louder or find some workaround to, to make it work. But, you know, I, I don't see anything that's going to stand in our way, but are there going to be some obstacles in the way? Absolutely, but, you know, it's our job to figure those out.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number five point two on our agenda and our old business, an update on the convention center management. And this morning, we're fortunate to have Mr. Dave Anderson, who is a Vice President of Spectra Venue Management and General Manager of the Palm Beach Convention Center in West Palm Beach, Florida. Dave, would you introduce your team there?
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. To my left is our new General Manager here in Terre Haute, Tanille Warner. Tanille is coming to us, as we talked about last month, from St. Charles, Missouri. St. Charles Convention Center, where Tanille was the Director of Sales. From a convention center standpoint, it is our number one facility in our company for revenue driven by gross square foot. And Tanille basically was in charge of that. So, and again, her experience, as, as most of you know, from Utah before with opening a building, she's done a lot of this before. So while it's her first opportunity as a GM, she already acts like a GM and has been like that for a number of years. So we're really excited to have her here. To my right is Laura Alexander. Laura is one of our superstar GMs. She is running the Owensboro Convention Center. So Laura is going to act as the mentor for Tanille all the way through the project. So not only up until opening, but also when we open the building itself. So besides running an amazing venue, Laura's team is probably one of the top convention center teams in our company as it relates to creating events. So we really feel like there's a lot of opportunity here in Terre Haute to create self-produced events locally that'll benefit the communities that are specific to this area. And Laura's team does an amazing job at that, so she'll be working with me. And I'll be overseeing the project just from a global standpoint. So this is my fourth building opening. So I'll be working with Garmin and Nations and all of you and all of them through the project and I'll stick around as long as you'll have. So anyways, so I just wanted to, just a couple of quick things before I give the mic to Tanille is, so we, we came in and it's so nice to be here just in person. Not that I didn't like being on the TVs the last couple of months, but, you know, it's different. You know, since the time we got here yesterday, we've only been here for less than twenty-four hours, but we had an amazing tour of the site. So Brian and Mark from Garmin and Shelley was with us too, so we all walked the site last night and it was amazing. It was, it was, it was great. I think, I mean, he showed a couple of pictures. I think I took a hundred and fifty pictures of the site last night myself and it is really, really coming along. It's going to be a beautiful, beautiful building and you're doing it the right way, from the finishes to the look to the feel. So it's, it's really coming along really well. We made it to the economic development meeting last night where I saw a bunch of you and we, we had a wonderful time at that. And then we had dinner at the Copper Bar, which was great. And then I was drinking hot chocolate this morning at, is it Cackleberries? So at six fifteen this morning, Tim was filling my cup and, and having, there so, and I was driving around the community. It's just, there's so much going on. And it was great last night to hear not only the convention center, but it was great to hear what's going on beyond the convention center as well and the development, not only downtown, but in the perimeter of the, the area. Because I think I've mentioned it before, it's important that, we already know the convention center is going to be great and we already know that we have a really nice hotel package. But we want to make sure that everything around the community is there as well because when we bring groups like firefighters, which we talked about, is they want to be able to do stuff, you know, before, during and after the event. And we want some of them to do staycations where they actually come in early or stay later after the event and stay in the community of Terre Haute and take in what's around here. So it's, it's not only the convention center, but it's going to be around it. So you'll see Tanille probably bugging a lot of you to, to know more about what's going on so we can actually sell not only the convention center, but the, the city in general. So our priorities right now, the number one priority is just to get Tanille here. So she, she will be on site first week in June, getting her family situated and then she'll probably be in office the second week in June. Garmin, thank you very much. They're, they're housing her across the street, so she'll have an office there. Actually, very nice office. Jealous. So she'll be on site and then we'll, we really will start kind of moving with initial priorities. So right now, we're working with Steve and Todd, which I so appreciate all the assistance with furniture, parking equipment, things like that. Those are the priorities, anything with a time-sensitive timeline on it. And then we'll work, of course, with Garmin on the project itself. And then eventually we'll start to go into sales and marketing. So we'll start working on, again, the messaging and making sure that people know that this convention center is coming up. I've seen a lot of press, you know, from a region and statewide basis, but really that's one of Tanille's first priorities is to work with all of you in RJL to get the word out in CBB to make sure that people know this is coming and we want to get the excitement going. So hard hat tours, get people there. I mean, just the tour yesterday was great. So we're already at a point now where we can do tours immediately. So, so I'm going to shut up and I'm going to turn over the mic to the person that's actually going to run the building. So here's some.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for having me and I have had such a warm welcoming to the community and I can't appreciate that more. It really, truly makes me feel good to come into a community that a lot of people know each other. I grew up in southern Illinois, so I feel like this is very similar to what I'm, I'm used to back home and so I really appreciate that. Like Dave said, I'll be moving here the first weekend of June. I'll be housed in the Garmin offices, which I appreciate having a place to go to. So I'll be starting, first and foremost, starting to work on some of the marketing items, starting to work on website, help get identity out there, start creating cut sheets for the convention center and really meeting with the community so that we can help start getting the word out and starting to push business. That's, one of my main objectives is really start lining up folks to be able to, you know, really gain some interest here and start booking meetings here in the near future. If you have any questions, let me know. I'm, I'm just happy to be here. Thank you.
Dave, I wanted to ask you, what do you think about that big empty space there in front of the building that we're, we're calling it the museum? Were, did that trip you trigger any, so to speak?
Oh, that basketball thing you're doing?
Yeah, you know, that old guy.
Yes. As soon as I leave here, I'm actually driving to the statue and doing a selfie before I leave. Yeah, the, we've, we talked about it and I so appreciate that, that we can be involved in the brainstorming. I think the Larry Bird Museum is, is going to be, you know, it's, it's what I said before about attractions. I mean, this is going to have a built-in attraction right there. And what, what better built-in attraction to have an iconic person like that with him giving all of that merchandise there? So, yeah, I was stepping on the rocks and taking all the photos and Shelley and I were already talking about, put this here, put this here. I got to find a way to hang his motorcycle off the ceiling. But yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, again, it's, it's, it's going to be unique, you know, it's, it's. Terre Haute's got so many things that I'm learning about that are unique and we want to make sure, just the brewery last night, how well done was that brewery? So, you know, while we want people to spend and be in the convention center, we don't want to lock them down. We want, you know, receptions, we want opening and closing stuff. Or let's say the second night of the conference, we want them to go to the brewery and we want them to do receptions at the Larry Bird Museum. So we're, we're already seeing those opportunities right away and so we're going to start to list those and that'll be part of the marketing pitch is not only come here for the convention center and the hotel rooms, but look at everything else that we have to offer. And I think people will eat that museum up as it relates to be able to stand there and have a drink and look at this iconic stuff. So I know I'll be there probably three days a week.
All right.
All right.
Does the board have a question? Mr. President, if I may, I, I really enjoyed the conversations I've had, but we, we made the right pick. I'm confident in that. I think Tanille's, her background is such that it just fits perfectly with this project. Her professional experience, you know, even just her family dynamics, it, it all works. And so I really feel good about it. You know, the fact that Dave and Laura are here to kind of assist through this, this project, I, I've really enjoyed our conversations and look forward to more. So thank you all.
I would echo that too.
One thing real quick, Brian Coystre is a great public speaker, but he's a great tour guy too. So if you haven't taken a tour, I text Brian on Tuesday morning. He was there in ten minutes to give me a tour. So please do that.
You know, last but not least, I would jib-buddy in the room, reach out to Tanille, get to know her, you know. Tell her what part your project, in, in this project you have and, and that's going to help her, you know, get further down the road quicker. So.
We actually sat at the restaurant last night after dinner, the three of us, and we already created the hit list of people that Tanille's going to stalk because yes, it's, it's important to us. You know, running a convention center is one thing, but it's just as important to us to be part of the community. And we want to get the stories and we want to understand, you know, the backstory of everything and we want, we want people to feel like they're part of this whole thing together. So gee, we'll be coming for you soon.
All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item five point three on our agenda is an update on the RFP process. Steve Bauer, Vice President of the Nations Group.
Mr. President, members of the board. There really is not much of an update on the RFP processes. As you know, the original draft agenda for today's meeting, we had hoped to bring the parking garage equipment and the furniture solicitation recommendation to the board today. It is that close to being completed, but we are not quite there yet. We need to verify on the parking garage equipment. There are two vendors that have responded to our solicitations, provided numbers. But as, as is typical with these types of items, the, the infrastructure, the software, those things that are critical to the operation of this parking garage, we need to vet those, those different systems. And so we will have that for you next month. Dave Anderson and Spectra have been really taking the lead with us to, to verify and validate those proposals from not just a financial standpoint, but from an operational standpoint. As it, as it relates to furniture, we did receive, as I told you last month, we received three bids on the furniture. Two were complete bids based on the specifications provided with all of the furniture items that were noted. One was a partial bid. We are probably within a week of having those recommendations and we will bring those to the board next month as well. We are within budget, obviously. There were some changes that were made in the floor plan. So as a result, those things that were specified a year and a half ago, we have to change some numbers, especially as it relates to conference rooms that are now offices, entryways that are now conference rooms. So we've got a few different numbers, but we are using the base bids that were received as a part of the solicitation to bring the, the final recommendation forward to you. Be happy to answer any questions. Mr. President, or member Crapo, the, one of the solicitors for the furniture was a partial bid that is a local Terre Haute furniture provider. So in discussing it with Spectra, what we will do is, so you know, it's always easier if somebody bids the entire package to deal with one person, but we know how critical it is to, to this board and this community to, to invest back in the community with those community vendors. So what we'll put together for you is, is a, a breakdown of the pricing and items that each vendor is providing. And then let the board make that recommendation and decision as to exactly who to select for this. But yes, there was one furniture vendor that is local.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Steve, thank you. Item number five point five on the budget is a update on the project budget with Jason Simler of Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Thank you. I sent out the comparison of the budget to actual expenses, I think Monday. I don't know if you have, if you don't, I have copies to hand out. But I'll just kind of briefly go through this, some of what I've done in previous months. But page two, if you turn to that, just compares the budget that was presented originally with what has been spent to date. It's kind of broken out between the design and professional fees, the hard construction costs and the furniture and fixtures and then the project contingencies. So you can see the total budget was thirty-four million, eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. What has been spent to date was fifteen point six million, which leaves nineteen point two remaining for the budget. Couple of key items, you can see the design and professional fees. There's eight hundred fifty-eight thousand at the top there remaining to be paid for those services. The large, you know, number of. The large, you know, number of the new construction, you can see the budget, as Brian mentioned, is $26,392,000. $11.5 million has been spent, leaving 14.8 for the construction. And then under that, you can see the Larry Bird Museum allowance, so we've been talking about, $1.5 million was in the budget for that. And two, very little has been spent out of the budget to date, but I see that number going down here the next few months more rapidly as we start getting more involved with that portion of the project. And then you see the project contingency, it's about $550,000 still remaining contingency budget. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. I'll kind of refer to Steve on that, I believe there is, but I'll let him answer that.
Mr. President, Board Member Conley, yes, there, there are some light items that are probably overestimated, overfunded right now that will, once we get to a point that there is surety that we will not be using all that funds, we will drop that down to contingency. And it's, it's probably a six-figure number.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Simler?
Thank you, Jason. Item 5.5, an update on the memorabilia cataloging. This, Shelley King.
Good morning. Just a brief update on where we stand right now with the museum and the memorabilia. We are currently in the concept development phase with Hillford and Associates to find out how to best utilize the space within the museum itself. We've had several meetings with them and shared several of the milestones and achievements and personal stories that we are wanting to be able to incorporate into the museum itself. They are in the process right now of putting together a layout and a plan to best be able to showcase these in an organized and fluid way so that you don't walk in and just kind of get a sense of, I don't know where to go from here. But they have been absolutely wonderful in working with us and brainstorming and hearing some of the ideas that we have, suggesting some of the exhibits that could be incorporated into this. And they have put in plan a, a layout, so to say, right now as far as different themes throughout the museum that could be used to best highlight these. But we have another meeting scheduled for next week, which is supposed to give a little bit more of definitive layout to what they are suggesting as far as different placements for different exhibits, where memorabilia could be placed that would really tell the story in a better fashion. So we are definitely, we are moving ahead. And I know several have been on the meetings with me with Hillford and Associates and they, they have just been very forthcoming with making sure that they embrace this project for Terre Haute itself. This is something that they want to make sure Terre Haute is able to take full ownership over and to be proud of. So, that said, anyone have questions? Any of you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. 5.6, the last item under old business is an update on legal matters. Ted Nolting of Kroger, Gartus and Regis.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any updates on legal matters, but I would like to introduce everybody to the newest attorney in our firm, Doug Kowalski. Doug comes from being formerly Chief of Staff, State Board of Accounts, before that was Corporation Counsel for the City of Indianapolis, among other things. Doug would be working with Brian and I on this project and you all, so you'll see him from time to time.
Very good. Let's move along to new business, as Ted was referring to. 6.3, a resolution 2021-9, setting remote meeting participation policy. Ted?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Well, in 2021, the General Assembly passed HE81437, which allows political subdivisions to continue, almost partially with holding virtual meetings. The governor's current executive order allowing all virtual extends at the end of this month. So in order to continue having remote participation, political subdivisions are required to adopt policies that govern the holding of virtual remote meetings. So what you have in front of you, Resolution 2021-07, tracks the House of Roald Act and establishes basically the bare minimum of the policy that is required. Couple of highlights, 50% of the members have to be physically present at every meeting. A member not, may not attend more than 50% of the board meetings virtually every year. And you have to attend, well, you can't attend more than two in a row. So this is something that we kind of need in place now, you know, just to make it a possibility, because we can make it more strict later if you would like. There doesn't have to be any requirement for allowing virtual meetings, but this at least gives us options.
This is something that we are required to do if we are to continue any type of Zoom meetings.
President Marvall, make a motion to approve 2021-07.
Second.
Motion has been made to adopt Resolution 2021-07. Mr. Bramble, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crapo? Mr. Conley? Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Marvall?
Aye.
Mr. Witt?
Resolution 2021-07 is now adopted. Ted, is there anything else?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Under item number seven, any other business, any, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, our next regular board meeting will be June 16th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. You all can make it, right? No vacations. All right. Hearing no, having no further business on the agenda, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all. I'm telling you, I know what's up June 16th, that I have so.